Alright, time is six P M. We've got to call the public hearing in order. Is there anybody here to speak on behalf of the items on the agenda tonight? Four oh three Williams Street. Secretary meeting, that was done, grab a bill, we'll have to not take any action on item number two right for short term round. Bill. Forty eleven's on the page, so we'll just get back. Resolution twenty four zero seven fifteen zero one. Adopting the final operating budget. Resolution twenty four fifteen zero three, adopting a final capital budget. And resolution twenty four zero seven fifteen zero four, allowing the city participate in the state of Delaware County municipal police and firefighter pension plan. This was um in the F Y twenty five budget, we allowed um we put funding aside, had our police officers into the state pension plan. We were one of the only municipalities in the state that didn't offer pension to the officers, so we put that in the pension plan. It's good for the officers and it's also going to be good for our recruitment and retention efforts. So. If anybody's curious, that's what that was for. Final resolution for the operating capital budget that everybody knows with the turnover we had in the office, we went through the budget workshops. The last meeting, we kind of put the final draft together and approved it, but this is just a final uh ordinance, I'm sorry, it's final resolution adopting the operating capital budget. Is anybody here to speak on behalf of any of those four items? Anybody from council?
I have one here like said. You said a second reading possible, adopting a short term rental. I thought all this was a dumb deal.
That's done, that's we're taking, we're gonna take that off the agenda.
Okay.
That's done, okay. So anywhere that reflects uh ordinance in reference to the short term round, we're gonna scratch that off the agenda, that's all we're gonna take care of. Alright, is anybody here to speak on behalf of any of these items that's on for the public hearing? Not, go ahead and recess. Alright, I'm gonna reconvene the uh public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak on behalf of four oh three Williams Street? Resolution twenty four zero seven fifteen zero one, adopting the final operating budget for F Y twenty five. Resolution twenty four zero seven fifteen zero three. Adopting a final capital budget for F Y twenty five. And finally, resolution twenty four zero seven fifteen dash zero four, allowing the city to participate in the state of Delaware county and municipal police and firefighter pension plan. Is anybody here to speak on any of those topics? Anybody from council?
I'd like to speak on that.
Go ahead.
My personal opinion is, if we give our police department pension plan, we'll be able, we'll be able to retain the good quality officers the chief has right now. So rather than get working here and then go need for a job.
He just wants to picture.
I want a picture.
Alright, left, raise your right hand, left hand.
Hey, hold on, yeah, I want his public picture, pardon.
Alright, raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Peter Dean.
I, Michael L. Jackson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of Delaware.
And the constitution of the state of Delaware.
That I will uphold the charter and ordinances of Delaware City.
That I will uphold the charter and ordinances of Delaware City.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of vice mayor according to the best of my ability.
Of the office of vice mayor according to the best of my abilities.
Alright, congratulations. The only caveat to that, and my mic's probably not gonna wanna do it, but George and Mike, you gotta switch seats.
They have to take their name plates?
Yes.
Can I just drop my jacket on here?
Alright, while they're switching, we'll go ahead into the police reports.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. Council, city staff, and those that attend, I'd like to present the monthly police report for June. If you refer to the map on the first page, you'll see a blue for the vehicle theft at the very top. Victim allegedly dropped his keys when returning home from work during the early evening hours. The next morning, while attempting to find his keys, he realized his enterprise rental car was removed from the driveway behind his residence. Vehicle was recovered in Cecil County, Maryland, a couple days later, undamaged. Vehicle was processed for latent prints with negative results. And there's no suspect information at this time. Below that, to the far left edge, is an orange, simple assault pinpoint. This was a physical altercation between two adults where both parties were arrested. They were released on bail in order to have no contact with each other. Just southeast of the assault is a green disorderly conduct pinpoint. This is the senseless, vile vandalism to the entryway of La Montecina Pizza and Pasta, most of you are aware of already. The scene and items left behind were so messy that processing for fingerprints was not an option. Officers have made contact with some recently disgruntled customers who were not linked to the crime. The incident remains an ongoing investigation. If you direct your attention to the far right of the map, you'll see a vandalism pinpoint within the property of fourteen point. Unknown subjects damaged a lot on an entryway to one of the bunkers on the property. This occurred during the daylight hours, and surveillance footage captured the incident. Officers have been assigned to the area for extra patrols, which is paid through grant funding. Just below that incident, closer to the center of the map, is a green drug violation pinpoint. This was actually a crash on Fifth Street that I'll cover in detail in significant events. The field interview to the left, and just under that incident, was a suspicious person trespassing, reported by the property owner. There's been official action taken by the property owner toward the trespassing party to hopefully avoid future issues. And the last incident is the purple fraud just below the field interview. That was a Facebook scam that involved a fraud where the victim funds were taken out of the victim's bank account. This investigation was turned over to the victim's banking institution for follow-up. You look at the second page, the graph shows Saturday was our busiest day of the month. And it looks like two, three o'clock in the afternoon and six o'clock in the evening were the busiest times of the day. We had thirty-nine calls for service in June, that's down from fifty-one in twenty twenty-three. And we're at three hundred and one complaints in the June, which is down from three hundred and eighty-two. The June totals, we had thirty-two traffic arrests, eight traffic warnings, three crime prevention checks, seventeen crime reports, fourteen field service reports, three accidents. All were property damage, one was a hidden rug. And eight criminal arrests. Uh Lieutenant Clements handled a single vehicle property damage crash on Fifth Street, where there was probable cause that the operator was under influence of drugs. During the course of the investigation, heroin was discovered during the vehicle search. Methamphetamine and a large quantity of marijuana was also located on the suspect. He was charged for driving under influence and possession of the above-mentioned drugs. The defendant was released on unsecured bail. The department had the honor of participating in the Juneteenth celebration at the African Union Church Cemetery, which was a huge success and included an impressive turnout. And the camera expansion project has begun with work being conducted at the police department. Delmarva Power finalized some loose ends throughout town that will allow emergency response protocol to start their exterior camera installation. And then, a couple things I didn't have on significant events. On August sixth, from six to nine P M, the department will be having its second annual national night out, which celebrates law enforcement and first responders across the country. Station fifteen and the D S P Marine and dive unit will also be on display. There will be activities and musical entertainment by What the Funk. And W D L's Rick Jensen will be the emcee. Uh Harbor Cruises will take place and be available. I wanna thank Tim Conkers of Main Street Delaware City for his efforts again this year in taking the lead for National Night Out. You can go to visitmydc dot com for more information. This year's event will be bigger and better than last year's, so make sure you come out, take advantage of the weekday entertainment. Open in Steel Winter Congress's thunder, I'm sure you can add to this information a little later. I also had a retired New Keston County officer and friend reach out to help promote the Delaware Law Enforcement Thank You Ride fundraiser on August twenty-second at Krabby Dicks. We're both at Delaware City and we hope that each restaurant will donate twenty percent of all sales, including alcohol from eleven A M. to close. These volunteers take part in bicycle rides to honor fallen police officers, and these proceeds will help fund their rides. I don't think he's here, but I wanna thank Mr. Buckhite for sponsoring this event, which is also worthy of attending for great cause. I have flyers for both events up here if anyone's interested. And I haven't forgotten about the Police Accountability Committee, it's been tabled briefly as a department, who's been working on a couple significant time-sensitive investigations. I've also been busy getting two part-time officers settled in, familiar with Delaware City. With that being said, I wanna take a moment to thank the mayor, council, and acting city manager Lovren for their support for the police department, as we not only added two experienced part-time officers, but we're able to negotiate a pay increase for the four full-time officers and a pension plan for our two eligible officers. This went into effect for the upcoming fiscal year. I have already sent, I've already seen a boost in morale with the increase in pay. More importantly, it allows me to address some staffing and coverage issues. There were eighteen total vacation days taken throughout June, which created staffing issues the entire month, based on our staffing of four at the time. Part-time officers will help alleviate these issues and allow the full-time officers to work in improved shifts resulting in added coverage in town. Again, thank you for your support, not just from our city officials up here, but due to residents as well. And if you happen to see Sergeant Wiseoff, your master corporal Hilton riding around town, be sure to stop him and introduce yourselves. That concludes the police report.
Any, any questions for the chief? Alright, thank you, sir. City management report.
I need mayor, council, and residents. Uh the first thing I brought on my report was the community center age back replacement. Um there was no real updates, but the project is underway. Um and like I said before, it's expected to go through September. Um it still looks like it's on track for that. Uh the Monroe Madison Street flood mitigation project, I think that's one we've heard about for like at least a year now and all. Um I did hear from uh D E M A this week, last week. Um and we received our grant award letter from D E M A, so we were awarded the grant, uh speaking for that project. Um so we are signing the documents, the acceptance forms that go back to D E M A. And the next step would be a kickoff meeting with them, but I didn't have a meeting for that yet. But it does sound like it's still be about a year of permitting and then a year of doing the work, so it's still gonna be a few years of project, but we do get awarded the grant. Um I have the community center generator project. Uh data engineering had their second site visit today for some additional understanding as they put together the bidding package. They will set up a date soon to meet with the city to discuss drawings and specifications for the bid. They were out there today, like I said, to just get some more information before they put that out, this is their second site visit. Delaware City Library, ADA ramp upgrade. We're gonna begin working on the entrance to the library to bring it into ADA compliance. Uh we're in the process now of working within an area to get it to be designed. And after that, other than the meetings I attended was the June twenty-fifth Board of Adjustment meeting, July first Planning Commission meeting, July ninth H P C meeting, and then July tenth Board of Adjustment.
Alright, any questions for the city management? Alright, thank you. We move on to the city solicitor's report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you. I just have a few items to report on tonight. The short-term rental unit ordinance passed in May. Uh had to make some revisions based on amendments that were done at that meeting that were not completed. And I'll be on the website, because what happens when an ordinance passes, we send it to the code company, who puts it online, but there was a little bit of lead time from the time they actually inserted it online. I wanted to mention that in preparing the revisions, I did uh take a look at the Weekly, the local paper. They, they put the uh video on YouTube. And it's really very excellent. And if there's any difficulty in hearing this meeting on YouTube, if you put it on closed caption, it's almost ninety-five percent, but you can make out everything you need to make out by going to watch the meeting, this being tonight, it'll be on YouTube courtesy of the Weekly. And basically, uh if you can't hear so well, if you just use closed captioning laptop, you'll be able to make out everything that happens, so I do recommend us do that, it's a great resource. Uh so the short-term rental unit ordinance will be online, Delaware City website shortly. Uh we also worked on the parking or use of city property for private use, which is what we talked about a few meetings ago regarding people being able to utilize city property that'll bust their residential properties for parking. It's on for a first read tonight, we'll be discussing that tonight, that's necessarily, but it'll be part of the public meeting before the next council meeting. That, uh of those orders will be online, future review prior to that next meeting, so you can come to the public meeting. We're certainly advancing that, so that becomes you have the city management. So that ordinance is on for first read tonight, not really for discussion, but to get it out in front of everybody so that they can start reviewing that and making comments. I did attend the planning commission meeting last week. There's been a lot of discussion in council about revising the parking ordinance. Planning commission made some recommendations that will be discussed tonight. And based on those discussions, we'll prepare orders to address the recommendations of the planning commission and what council has been discussing over the last couple months. Uh beyond those matters, uh we discussed a few miscellaneous legal issues over the last month. And this is my report.
Alright, thank you, sir. Any questions for the city solicitor? Alright, thank you. Alright, looks like we're gonna have to come back to the finance report. Janet's still wrapping up numbers for the uh the month end of June. Uh she comes in, we'll be handling that under new business. Under announcements, points, appointments, announcements, and communications. Unfortunately, I do have to report tonight, and we've had another resignation from council. Councilman Saunders had to um resign citing family issues. Uh I don't wanna get him in too much detail, I'll leave that up to Dan if he wants to talk about it, if anybody reaches out to him, but I will say this, keep Dan in your, your thoughts and prayers for his family. Certainly wasn't an easy decision. But apparently, he's made the right decision and the best interest of his family, so I know we had a lot of turnover on council, and they all seem to be related to health issues for, for members that sat up here in these seats, so I will say, keep Dan, Betty, and everybody else that sat up here and had to, who's had to suffer health reasons, keep all of them in your thoughts and prayers. Uh is there any organization that wants to get a reward? The commissions, yes?
Yes, uh the Star Preservation Commission, Lynn Delaplane. Uh we approved the work on the community center uh at our recent meeting, which will include the doors into the front of the library, which will match the doors, the new doors at the back of the library. They'll also be rebuilding the handicap ramp, so it is up to the ADA codes. And it's gonna be filled in with bricks, so it's gonna be very attractive, and it will match the front of the building. Also, uh we approved the handicap ramp in the very back of the building uh that has been demolished because it was unsafe, and that's been approved uh to rebuild at this time. So, that's about what I have for now.
Alright, thank you. Anything to plan? Tim? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm there.
Okay. You listened to the proposed master plan for before? That was an informational, uh made, nothing, you know, floating on this information. We also talked about the department business.
Can't hear you.
Big problem?
Can't hear you.
For more elect. We kinda need to think about going back to you or the mayor appointing a person to fill the month of full term.
I, I agree.
If he wins his election at the county, it looks good. We lost Dan, how is it an election that costs the election to Dan, or costs the election to him? All in this year, the time they do it, it costs us a couple thousand bucks.
Yeah, I agree. The problem is, is that's on my list of things to put in for a charter update. The problem is it has to get approved by this council by two, two meetings. It has to go through ordinance, and then it has to go to the do-over at the legislature. They're out of session until January, so it's kinda is what it is for now, so, but my plan is to put it on a future, to a future meeting agenda, so when January hits, we'll be ready to send that package down to the ordinance.
Sir, we're not waiting to January, is it not important?
No, 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 just, we gotta do the election. The special election probably won't, with the time requirements and stuff they have, probably won't happen until September. Uh but then January, we'll have this language updated, so the American appointment of vacancy, like it used to be before.
Are you, I understand the whole concept, what you're getting at, but my question would be, when anybody who's interested, be able to put the application in to run for that decision?
Well, like I said, we have to defer to the solicitor and Brittany alone. The special election's probably not gonna be till September, so once we set the date for the special election, it'll be announced, and whoever wants to run can put their name in. In fact, that is not on, mostly got on the agenda tonight, but we can still set a date for a special, special meeting to run for. So we'll put that one on, I'll put it to you right here, and we'll set that date tonight.
Rather than my concept, it's just that we don't see this as possible.
No, no, absolutely, that's always been the intent.
I think to argue with that statement, I think we need to wait until we find out what's happening with George. If we do, if we hold a special election, and then George leaves us, we're holding an immediate special election afterwards. And for the state that's lost the town money every time we hold this.
I understand that, but I also understand the fact that if George wins his election, which I support him completely, is the fact that he could even get sworn in till January anyway.
You know, let me, let me interject real quick, 'cause it's really a moot point, because we buy the charter and the coup, we're required to have a special election when it's so many days, so we're happy to do that anyway. So, but again, when, once we update the charter and put the appointment back in place, we won't have to worry about this again. And George will be, if George is um elected in September, I don't believe he would have to resign until he's officially sworn in in, in January, is that correct?
I heard November.
So if George wins, the county council's.
Oh, that's right, okay. County council sometimes has to take office within a few days of the election, however. I know that they've changed, like what used to be, get elected, go in in January, but I think I recall the county, for question reasons, pushed that off. He may have to report if he wins, he's to report to the county officially as a county council member. That's me. Sir, you used the word he believes, and that tells me you're not really doing it.
Well, let's, let's put it on the agenda for August's meeting, 'cause the, the primaries not till September anyway, so we discussed it, have an answer in August, that'll go upon you tomorrow. Alright, any other, any other words? I'm sorry, Mayor, we're next. Juneteenth?
Juneteenth, it's, so, and this will be my last report for this year, but I'm back next year for more. Um and Lori, Lori, actually, I, I shouldn't defer to you. Um I just wanna say a couple of special thanks. One, of course, is to Lori. Um because the library has become our very special home and resource. Of course, Tim uh gave us the levity that we needed. But I wanted to talk for just a minute about our final event, which was out at the cemetery. Um it was truly extraordinary. It was such a hot day. And yet, a hundred people came out, many of them walking, but many of them also transported by our chief of police, who showed up at seven o'clock in the morning to transport people out there in golf carts. Uh who then disappeared for a moment while somebody else ran the golf cart to change into his dress blues. And I am so sorry, I don't have a picture of that. Some guy got a man in dress blues, I tell you. It was truly extraordinary. Our, our mayor was at every one of our events, our acting, um what you call, acting town manager, city manager. Our acting city manager was at many of those, uh and most especially at Lynn Delaplane's really extraordinary um presentation of her, of her work. Not just photographs, but documentation of the history that we're carrying forward. So, thank you all for participating, and we'll see you next year.
Alright, any other organizations? I'm sorry, yes, Steve?
Uh there'll be some tree trimming going on in town this week. Cutting Edge will be addressing a lot of the trees that have a lot of dead wood in them. So if you see them working around, uh somebody knocks on your door and says, can you move your car, I'd appreciate your help with that. I also have a, a message uh from Randy Aliso Dello from Refinery. They conducted their golf tournament fundraiser today. Uh Claire and I spent the morning out there, it was well-attended. And the chief wanted to send her apologies for not being here tonight. They're cleaning up right now from the animal very long day of fundraising that will affect all of us with the run of the segment.
And I just wanna clarify for a record, Dave has pretty much resigned from the tree commission now that he's taken on his role as the uh council member, and they will elect a new chair at the next meeting, which I believe Claire has offered to step up and fill that role, if I'm not mistaken, is that correct?
Yeah, he'll be appointing whoever, uh they recommend.
Now, I gotta point, I'll point your vacancy, but Dave's, they select our chairman, so. Alright, any other commission reports, that's library?
Hi, Lori Elton, director of the Delaware City Library. Um we, first, I would say thank you to the city council and, and Brittany, for all of the work you guys are doing over the community center. We're very appreciative of all the appearances. Um the library's summer meeting challenge is still unknown. You can still sign up. You can still log all your activities and hours for some pretty cool prizes. And if you have any questions, check with our staff, our amazing library staff can help you in any way. Um the summer meeting uh theme is adventure begins in your library. We have a lot of fun and adventurous programs planned. Tomorrow, we have a map making for kids. Uh Wednesday morning, the Wilmington Police Department will be visiting the library before we're open, but they'll be doing a demonstration of their canine unit, which is really cool. We've had them out before in there, it's a really neat presentation. So that's at ten A M. on Wednesday. Uh Wednesday afternoon, cooking with Kathy for teens. Uh Thursday evening, art in the library for adults, and um we have a couple of new classes. Um a drop-in machine sewing instruction class on the last Monday of the month, which the next one will be July twenty-ninth, so if you'd like to learn how to use um a sewing machine, which the library will provide, and which you could also check out if you wanna uh come visit us on the last Monday of the month. Um we're also pulling an interest in a game night for adults, so let me know if anybody's interested in doing that. We haven't found a date yet.
Alright, thank you. Tim, do you think for meeting street?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, fellow residents. Chief, you mentioned National Night Out, come support all of our local law enforcement and first responders. Uh August sixth, that's the first Tuesday in August, it would be a grand time. And then, every Tuesday in August, we have music in the park. And so, we'll have Roger Nerky, we've got Spooky Speaky, and we've got Judy Sings the Blues. That's each Tuesday. And if that's not good enough, many of the merchants will participate in ten cent, ten percent off on Tuesdays, where you can go in and get ten percent off of certain products in their stores on Tuesdays to honor these uh these Tuesday night concerts. And we're having Blue Crab Wrap, where you can bring the receipts that you got, put it in the bucket, and you will get a twenty to fifty dollar gift certificate. put it in the bucket, and you will get a twenty to fifty dollar gift certificate for that business whose, whose receipt we have. So those are all in the month of August. Every Tuesday in August, something for you. The other thing is, um, you wanna make sure everything is partyed up, because there's a photographer from Out and About Magazine coming to town, uh, tomorrow and, and Wednesday to take photographs, because Delaware City will be featured as the place to go and the place to visit in Out and About August.
What time we got for that?
Six to nine. Thank you.
All right, any other commissions?
Um, my name is Olivia. I'm the vice president of the Missouri Community Partnership. This one's a little version of what's coming up. Our most recent model is going to be this Saturday, July twenty. Is there any question that we do? Tickets have already been, um, claimed, so this is just on Monday, but we are moving to climb the library, the main park, from up there instead of the main Friday day. Uh, the local building buzz is at eight thirty, so try to arrive a little before, so that way you can fix it out, because there's no barriers and everything. Our next event that we are hosting or planning is going to be our annual water park party, called the Drive and Run. It is Saturday, August tenth. It is one twelve PM. Everything is provided, there will be food, drinks, entertainment, water slides, and classes. Uh, would you just recommend bringing a towel and bringing a chair for seating in the same room?
Well, I think that they're also participating in National Night Out with kids activity.
Yes, so we will be sponsoring the new events at National Night Out, and we will also be getting a popcorn. And we are also always looking for volunteers, so if you're interested in helping out any of the guys, please, you're more than welcome to come. And if you're interested in being a board member, please, expect some interest of them. They'll have a volunteer meeting, and maybe you can set up a board.
All right, she can.
Um, just to note that we have our next meeting on August fifteenth, this Thursday night, at the library, six PM. Uh, we'll all, we'll be, we are always looking for volunteers, so please, uh, feel free to join the meeting. And, um, also, we will have day of volunteers meeting as well, and they'll sign up for the day of the meeting. Just so everyone knows, it's Saturday afternoon.
Thank you. Uh, Tim, you wanna save yours for new business for Ford Dupont? Uh, President Poppy, anything required on that? All right, any other committee or commission, let's give a report. All right, seeing none, we're gonna move on to old business. Item number one is discussion on the partner requirements in the C one district. I'm not sure how it is how it went. I thought we put a moratorium on it last month, so.
Uh, we put a moratorium on it until the planning commission could address it. I'm assuming?
We sent you.
Yeah.
We got the memo.
We've got the memo.
Based on that, we prepared an ordinance that counts as order of recommendation made by the planning commission. What the planning commission did after reading the, the memo, increased the distance requirements as it relates to available parking to a commercial business from six hundred feet to two thousand six hundred forty feet for one half mile basically. So it just opened up a lot more parking, and you can count that, um, odds free parking towards the parking department. So it does, there's all the issues that have brought the council in terms of, you know, we have a lot of excess parking, but under the corporate code, you can't really use that without going to the board to address it. In the past, you could go to the board to address it, but now the city manager has the discretion to look at it and say, okay, your business is located here for a circle of around that twenty six hundred forty feet. That's gonna capture this, this parking loss. And for now, there should not be an issue if this passes, if you want to be prepared ordinance based on the structure requirements.
Okay, all right. All right, so we can just basically keep the merger in one until we come back to council to decide what to do with this ordinance?
Correct.
Okay, all right, gotcha. All right, so I opened it up to, uh, council for discussion based on planning's recommendations. Is that the way we wanna proceed?
We can't just vote to per?
Uh, we can't vote, we need to go.
We can't vote on it, we can have you prep the ordinance.
Correct.
So we can, we can do a motion to have you craft an ordinance to update their recommendations?
Exactly.
So I entertain a motion to have the city solicitor craft an ordinance and support the planning commission's recommendations for parking in the C one district.
I make a motion to have city solicitor draft an ordinance, meeting the requirements of other planning commission's recommendations.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? None of those in favor? Poo's? Motion's carried. Uh, item number two, yes?
C one's a C two, right? Okay. C three, I guess you're right.
So just to clarify, recommendation of C one and C one L. I don't see anything about C two.
I'm sorry, C one.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm gonna need another, I'm gonna need another motion included in C one L.
No, I said C one L. The paper includes C one L, Tim said C two.
I know, but our, our motion will only include into C one. We need a motion to make recovery of C one L.
I make a motion. I, I, you made a motion to accept the recommendation, which includes C one L.
Yes, just as we do, that you make your motion recommend that the ordinance consists with the planning commission's recommendation, and it would prepare that for your, uh, review, of course, for you next year.
Right, but that's what I'm saying. The recommendation has C one and C one L, so we don't need another recommendation. This will be.
Yeah, but your, the, now your motion always had a C one, so I think what Bill's recommending is just making a motion to have the city solicitor draft an ordinance based on the recommendations of the planning commission. That's why both on your copy.
Correct. Okay.
So we'll just make a new motion for that.
I make a motion, I'll directly take the many commissions, and then make a motion for.
All right, so a new motion is to authorize the city solicitor to draft an ordinance based off the recommendations of the planning commission's for parking in the C one, the C one L district. All right. Who's second?
I.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? None of all those in favor?
Aye.
Poo's? Motion's carried. All right. Item number two, we can take off the, uh, agenda that's already been taken care of. Short-term rental, that was already passed, so if anyone can get to take any action on that. New business for Ford Dupont Street, Preston Corden, minor subdivision. I don't believe Preston is here tonight, but he has to remove that. Okay, so we're gonna, we'll put that on the August agenda. All right, item number two is land use plan for Ford Dupont, presentation by Tim Slaven, David Edgell, board of directors for Ford Dupont, reeval in the court.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Representative Council, for allowing us to promote this time today. My name is Tim Slaven. I'm the technical director of Ford Dupont, itself, in the city of Delaware City. We have wanted to present this information on item for council this season. This is our land use plan that we've been working on since, uh, January. This plan, when adopted by our board of directors, will inform our two, both of the county's lands on the campus. Uh, and that said, we wanted to be sure that we had an inclusive process throughout, whenever, you know, criticism was passed. Lots of plans, you know, and all of it, and we're just walking through how we, what, paint this map and what this map means. Committee was chartered in, uh, January of twenty twenty four, and included my colleague, David Edgell, as chair, as a director of the office, and planning coordination. We also had Wendy Rogers, who's a resident of Delaware City, Ronnie Hall, and, and a member of our board. Uh, Ronnie Hall was our locust, who was a member of our board. Linda Naval, who was a resident and homeowner here in Delaware City, Michael Lutz, who's a resident and owner here in Delaware City. Tim Conges, who's a resident and property owner here in Delaware City. Cicely, Cicely Bedwell, who's also, uh, property owner and resident of Delaware City. And then Hecificio, who's from Department of Natural Resources and Environmental Control, Michael Holt, who is the planner for State Parks. I also wanna make a home to introduce our newest candidate. We have Valerie Miller, who's a chair of our agency, who's seen her a lot. Quite a bit. The, the charge to the committee was to state recommendations of the board of directors on the overall development of the use of plans. Committee's primary goal was to recommend a conceptual plan, including periodic updates as needed. This committee met six times, and all meetings were open to the public. A couple notes were made in accordance with the period of the meeting had, and we have minutes for all meetings. And David Edgell's gonna walk me through the proposed plans and will answer any questions that you have, but I wanted to give you a little bit of context first. This plan seeks a little bit different perspective than maybe it's a conceptual plan. Many of you may be familiar with, uh, with this conceptual plan, and then we locked in on this, uh, when I started about two years ago. There had been multiple versions of the plans before we bought over. Sometimes on a weekly or monthly basis. And so we locked in on this one and stayed on this one, and this is what we're amending now. We know what was off, that was just what we were proposing, but the focus is that this had a micro focus to it. Kind of prescribed where a building could go and what size, and we wanna open up areas of campus to allow the market to help us to turn this, whether what's used in some of the spaces we could do. So there's a broader perspective, and then we will be retrieving that, that plan, uh, in August of twenty twenty four, when the board of directors adopts the terms of, they should do, uh, just for about information on July first, we presented this same information session with the planning commission. We're here now before Mayor and Council. On July twenty fourth in this room, we'll be loading a community update. Open to anyone who would like to come in, talk about this plan, and Russell's gonna update some of the capital projects that we have on the campus. And then on August fourteenth, our board of directors will be in the public session to discuss this plan. We wanted to make it a very inclusive process, involve as many people as possible. And so I'm gonna turn to David, who will explain the plan. The plan, it is all in the larger words, the larger, you can't get it out. And if anybody needs it, there's no way out.
Thank you, Tim. Again, David Edgell, I'm on the board of directors, and I'm also a day job on the director of the office of the planning coordination, because the planner, so. In turn, me, Tom invited me and elected me to chair this committee, uh, and it's been a really great, uh, opportunity to work with residents, and the others on the committee, with the, to attendance, but, uh, the other for? Oh, then, yes, yes, Lisa. The hat, the hat, named Nogita. Um, so as Tim mentioned, you know, this, this plan that you probably see many versions of over the years, it's really a urban design focused plan, it's very specific, it often changed, we knew opportunities came about, and, and, uh, you know, it was kind of a moving target. When, when Tim took over, uh, it kind of froze in time, and then we got the opportunity to do this new plan. You know, we zoomed out a little further, and really, I approached it, and our, our committee approached it as really a land use plan, like you can see it in your conference, the plan, that, uh, you know, gives some specific guidance about the land categories, the areas on the campus, uh, for making sense. So I'm gonna walk you through it, uh, right now. If, if you, uh, probably all, it's kind of hard to see, if you've got your sheet, so you can follow along. Yeah, Delaware City proper is, is here, the ranch canal is on this edge. The river is, uh, is on this edge. That kind of oriented to where we are on the campus. Uh, one of the first things we did is we talked through things on the campus that were, uh, not gonna change, and were gonna stay the same for the foreseeable future. Uh, and those things include, uh, you can see those little white squares, the wastewater treatment plant for, for Delaware City. You know, we kind of, early on, there might have been some talk about we're trying to do that, but that's not talking about that anymore, so that's gonna be there for a while. Uh, we also have down here, this quarter, this white, uh, square here, that's the Delaware National Guard facility. And based on our information today, National Guard is staying in that facility and, uh, you know, will be there for as long as we can see in future. Um, so the other things we know are not gonna change, uh, is the, the canal district officers grow, the new housing development, and the, and the sort of lots that have been sold, and many houses have been built there, updated. You know, certainly gonna be a residential district for the foreseeable future, this, that's colored yellow, for residential. Um, uh, we also looked at, uh, the natural resources and features of the site, at the very important aspects of the campus. Uh, it's kind of, you know, rooted in nature, its location is really one of the most important parks in Delaware City. Natural environment, it's beauty, the views of the river, et cetera, et cetera. So that, you can see this white green color, so really the wetlands and floodplains and woodlands along the river, you know, will be maintained and protected for, for, uh, you know, forever. Uh, and another important area is gray ground, which is the central open space of the campus. Absolutely kind of essential to the, to the character of the campus, and, and, you know, it's gonna, you know, sort of be there, you know. Tim was messing around with, you know, meadows and things of that nature, but it'll always be an open space, uh, for the benefit of the neighborhood. So, uh, then we started talking about, uh, what, you know, we, we ended up calling, uh, opportunity areas on the campus. And these are areas where future is maybe not yet known, but we have, we created visions of what we'd like to see in these different areas on the campus. And I'm gonna just go around the, uh, around the campus and put them out to you. Um, and they're numbered, there's labels, but it, you know, I'm just doing. I guess starting this quarter, uh, it's kind of in a pink color, uh, we kind of labeled it green, green, commercial, mixed use. Uh, and the idea of that was in the original plan, that was a marina. There was to be a, you know, full-size marina with Mason and Knox, and our committee, you know, our, our charge was to re-go, on the way to that, based on the current, on the conditions of the current conditions of the campus. And we, we kind of, you know, broadened that a little bit, understanding that, first of all, uh, fun fact, the property is not yet owned by Ford Dupont. Uh, it is currently still owned by the Oregon Fort Engineers, and there's talks about transferring that property to Ford, so number one, that Ford doesn't own that property yet. Uh, you know, number two, it's a big spoil pile, so there's red spoils are kind of piled up there, so it's a big pile. But, but in the future, uh, should Ford be able to acquire that property and develop that property, we kind of felt that was a very critical property, uh, for the, the campus, that would provide water access. And if not a marina, in terms of a full-service marina like with Mason and, and, uh, you know, slips and things like that, at least some access to the, to the, to a dock, or the, or the, or the ranch, the ranch canal, uh, riverwalk, um, you know. Tim Conges, yeah, he wants a, he was thinking, you know, Ferris wheel. I can't say windmill, but he, he likes the other. But again, something in an area that would have commercial, possibly residential, uh, retail, restaurants, uh, just a, a great access point for the river and a great commercial and, and, and possible residential opportunity there in this part of the town. Um, so moving, moving through this river, the boat rank, by the way, it's not gonna, it's not gonna change, that's gonna be there. Uh, this, uh, yellow area right next to it, uh, you've all seen this as a residential development called Marina Village. So that's one of the thirty townhouses. Uh, that property is currently contracted with the developer, and we're gonna sway through the approval process, which will include, uh, I understand, you know, more steps through the, through the city, uh, you know, so this, you know, the, 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 uh, many really felt that to honor that contract and to honor that process, it's gonna remain a residential, uh, community, uh, in the future, uh, with the caveat that, you know, should things occur in that exact plan, that Marina Village plan that you all have maybe seen, doesn't come to fruition someday, that residential will still be the use, but with more thought given to the views of the river, maybe community open spaces, things for the residents to be able to get through that area and see the, see the water and participate in the, just the views that are there on that, on that side. So, uh, that's that site. Up here, towards the river, this is the, what we call the active recreation area. This is kind of central to the campus. Um, it's an area that, uh, probably all know the parking lot, there was the state park, uh, it's kind of in that vicinity. Uh, it- It, you know, the idea there is is to construct active recreational amenities, park-like amenities. There have been some plans drawn up in draft form, which the board has had for a couple of years. Really to pursue, you know, really, you know, walking trails and gazebos and sports courts. And other things that would draw people to that part of your rural community, open space. And central location of the campus in that area. And moving moving along here, you see this this kind of purple area that extends here. This is really the historic area of the campus. We call this the downtown core, if you will, it's all mixed use on the plan. And it's the idea that the historic buildings in that area will be, you know, adaptively reused into other uses. And you know, and it's it's really, you know, preserved from a historic standpoint. But it's really challenging and difficult to figure out exactly what they'll be. But the market will determine, you know, what use might be. Some might be residential, some might be commercial, some might be the mix of different things. But looking at those opportunities as they as they come to be, you know, the theater, the PX are in that that area. Right here, those are important, you know, anchors to that part of the campus. The certainly we've got our vacant painter buildings, the largest building on the campus. You're searching, actively searching for, you know, users for those those buildings. And looking at different options for renovating, adapting them. And the idea is to certainly support sort of a walkable mixed use environment where it really is something for people to do. We've heard things like, you know, bakeries and breweries, distilleries and and art spaces and things of that nature. And I think those are all possibilities of really keeping that historic or active. There's also space in this historic core for what we call infill development. There's certainly some room for lots that could be duplex units that would match the duplex units that are there. Possibly other types of uses that would fit on some of the land that's there. And and to work toward that goal in the future. Second to last, number, I'll talk about this gray area down the bottom, which is what I talked about. This number six here, we call it the South Field. This is probably, other than this parade bill, is probably the largest single sort of block of land. That's that's not developed on the campus. And you know, the the committee really worked on a number of different ideas for that. And where we landed was really to have a mixed use theme in that area as well. So not just accept one type of use, commercial or residential. They really tried to replicate the pattern here and have, you know, some commercial uses, maybe some office, definitely some residential. And some things that was to make that walkable pattern right next to the historic core. And then finally, I just mentioned the next to the National Guard area. This area is kind of gray down here. There's a warehouse here that is the food store warehouse for the state. That's changing here soon. They're making that to be a little facility. That will be leased to another tenant, which will presumably be a warehouse used for whole storage. Which is probably a pretty good chance we can get something like that on the campus. But there is some land under this block that would be available for potential other light industrial uses. And we talked about light industrial being, you know, storage or warehousing or our contractors yards or other types of things. Nothing heavy to generate a lot of truck traffic. And there's also a water tower on this site here, which we should put. But there is some land for maybe some storage or parking or other types of things that might occur there. So that is generally the plan. The plan also kind of goes into some of the recreational amenities and and utility issues and other things that the board is working on. I'm sure Tim could, of course, tonight on the creative things that we're doing. I don't know if Tim did anything I missed that she wanted to chime in on that, you know, it's. And and again, it's, this is a, this is, you know, higher level. This is very specific about, I think it must be built a certain way. And here, this is designed so that when, you know, a market opportunity comes to Fort. That that Tim and the board can work with that, whoever that will be. And kind of make a project that's going to be a benefit to the fort, to Delaware City. Not be so specific that, you know, the house got to be here and the, you know, the roof is there.
Is he going on an elevated trail?
Elevated trail, Tim might be next. Tim can, and you'll see this marking here on this, that his preference elevated bicycle trail. I'm not going to go right there, but I go somewhere. Tim, you know, the elevated trail right now is in about seventy percent design. Stayed, had a little hang up with the Army Corps of Engineers. Jurisdiction areas that have come out, these vaccine areas. But it essentially runs, it runs from here below the monitoring.
Now, it was supposed to wrap around the back of the National Guard site. But we may bring it down to surface level here in front of National Guard site for security purposes.
Question to that?
Yeah. At the planning committee meeting this past month. I really wasn't authorized to give you my feelings, so I'd like to do so now. Back in 2016, I sat on the planning committee when the annexation of Fort Dupont was proposed. When that was proposed, the big selling point was the fact that there was going to be a new marina being put in. Now, I understand the Army Corps of Engineers owns that trouble. But the comparisons that were made at that time, if you look over at, we're at Rain Two Hoals, there's two marinas in there. When you go to Chesapeake City, there's four or five marinas in there and they're thriving. But the competition keeps bringing new business. And that's what I'd like to see, I'm at the seat. I'm asking you to please keep that marina in your mind. Because it's, that was important to us when we voted for this back in 2016. Thanks for that.
Yeah, and that's it. Important note that the committee, you know, the thing about this area definitely did not preclude the future study. The project being it could be a marina, but we also talked about what ifs. And if that didn't come to pass, it was very.
We're saying that the what ifs are coming more into prevalent than than the original contention. So just keep in the back of your mind.
Thank you.
Can you build a bike? When the Corps of Engineers decides to give up title in these sessions. Will we have to go through the motions of annexing to the city?
No, it's only in extent, that's just ownership. Corps of Engineers involves your ownership.
Yes.
This is an idea that's already in the public area, maybe something kind of a small grocery store.
Not a bad idea at all. And that's, those are the kind of, yeah, those are the kind of things we're hoping someday. Grocery stores, farms, or if you have bakery, things that are going to just add to the quality of life in the city in in.
Are there going to be any future discussions? Are are any discussions taking place with the county about relocating and wastewater treatment plan?
So I'm open to having those conversations. Like those, like, no, this. The initial conversation was very expensive and we have to take it to the show. I I think it would be great if it wasn't on that location.
Uh, shouldn't be.
Right now it's.
Well, since I'm living or employed with the county, I'd be happy to ask them that question.
You're not employed yet.
Does the bike trail also intend to provide some stormwater mitigation?
White white trail will be, I believe, six to eight feet in height. It does not meet the Corps of Engineers definition on the road.
That was my question. That's going to require a stretch rule.
Will provide relief from any committee.
Uh, did you have a question?
Yeah, if they have answered, I'm not sure. My my one thought I wanted to say. When each side there adjacent to the river. I'm assuming that the you guys and the Corps of Engineers are thinking something cautious of building it up, so to speak. To prefer the flooding that can happen at any time during the year. But let's what happened to it, the whole area is low-riding. So I mean, thinking.
That elevated trail will provide.
How high would that be?
It's going to be between six and eight feet.
Six to eight feet? Do you want to have some type of recovery so that if water gets, gets carried?
It's not on those, it's not immediately on the current ride.
There's, there is, question your question. I I just wondered if you wanted to mention, you know, there is more being done for more management and the structure of the campus.
Yeah, it's an ongoing, ongoing issue. So I can't, if you, somebody told me a long time ago, if you really want to see if the city works, what happened a little bit that respect?
Well, I mean, I just like to mention this because I know for a fact, I've seen the gray ground in other areas over there underwater. And it might happen, that's forbidden.
So I can tell you, we had a recent event where we had a lot of water reflect on the gray ground. And it was a combination of events that happened, right? We had that big storm that came in, blew all the water up into the branch canal. We had the highest high tide we've had in years. And when we pumped on the other side of the campus, brought back kind of away from the government, we could pump that. Water reflects, pumps underneath the gray ground into the branch canal, that's what we need. When it pumped into that, the water at branch canal level was above the output. So there was nowhere for that to go. And so it just stopped and it just went to where it was. Once that low tide came, it drank right out. But we still have to, that's an antiquated stormwater management system on the far side of the campus. If you want to see how new stormwater system works, go through the canal. Go across the road, where it had rains. All those retention ponds and bio bases, they work exactly as they were. So clean water, no flooding.
Is that essentially, is that usable to you or is that harsh or is that?
It can be used. Right now it's spoiled.
So then you have this little, you know, there's a lot of water in there and it's on.
Or purchase this.
So Tim, when future dredging projects with that spoiled area, you push down closer to the C and D canal?
So that's one of the issues that we have. Right now, we have a congressional party, the Corps of Engineers transfer that land to the board of directors.
Okay.
And we've had discussions about having that done. And the pushback we get is that it's going to cause additional cost anytime you dredge, right? Immediately adjacent to it. So where are those, where do that material go? We have to solve that problem. Even if I. I mean, I would just put it to you, this isn't selling. This is about, Fort Dupont is about Delaware City. If you're looking at real estate that is underutilized and really needs something to be, you know, you've got acres of water.
No, I'm sure.
Okay, go ahead.
Who?
Go ahead, go ahead, Jack.
Okay. The Lake Green area, we talked about with the bike trail and all that's going to be obscene, building space. Basically in that area, it looks like they're actually part of a purple section. Am I reading this correctly? Are they going to be renovated or are they under, hang on, that's right. Some of them have been renovated, some of them will be.
The other thing is with the bunker here. And you know, it's impermanent, the idea someday maybe the bunker will come, something that will be just bunker. But you know, that's all kind of the future to be determined. What's the right use, the right property, the right reservation. Believe it or not, there are developers, individuals who have vision. And love for history, that will be easy, be able to find the use be a residential, commercial, retail, restaurant.
Well, in terms of what you're saying, I wasn't really originally did this and met you guys and chose to play. But I just want to make sure everything that you have in this historical area is not disturbed by any different types of structures or anything like that.
So every, every, every building that's that's there now has to be. I think only two buildings now that are not contributing to the National Guard is for resort places, resort. So contributing elements to the campus. Thank you.
On the lower part of your bike trail there on the right side, just before the National Guard. There's an area that's fenced off and signs indicating that there were possible unexploded munitions in that area. What will or has been done regarding that area?
Yeah, we'll double check with state parks. I know they did a complete survey of my corporate on the site. But it was some number of years ago. Obviously, we're not a building area, but right.
So he'll let your little kids run around up there? Is that the commandant kind of order? It's either clear or it isn't clear, right?
Yes.
So if it's clear, then the signs should come down. If it's not clear, the signs should be.
Liability, according to state parks, means the signs are there, they're being taken in a similar way at Little Mile and other places.
All right, any other questions?
Yeah, I would be more interested in a lab pool, medical aid unit, residence house. That we have a goal with last year, anytime we have something coming. And that that would be a real medical department. So we can get some blood drawn and somewhere where we're not feeling too good, we can go to check that. And I think that would be a real asset for this.
Any other questions? Tim, I just got a couple of quick follow-ups. I was taking notes when I already started talking here. But I wanted to, in terms of the historical buildings in sight that's on Fort Dupont. Is that information or any changes, is that being done in cooperation with our HPC due December? And you don't have to answer right now, I guess my request, I guess my request would be if if not, can we make sure that's? Okay. The other thing is, last couple of meetings, we've been talking about a dog park. And I think we pretty much had things narrowed down and it kind of got to a standstill because the the thought process was that there's only one build on Fort Dupont side. Is that anywhere a part of this conceptual plan or is anything in the near future?
So one of the conceptual plans for the recreation area, it was very big. It's more space for dogs. And I'm getting a quick back to now, we're now in plan, but we have more active recreation. For Lord, it's that James Hudson, the view of most of the campus, we're not focused on that. I will tell you, there's a little bit of lead time, somebody here is right, it might go well. And that is that some of those areas are still in the grant, they have to be tested out and mediated.
Okay. All right. Fair enough. Thank you, thank you.
Good job.
All right, next item on the agenda is I asked for this to be put on here. This is for discussion of the library lease. We are actually, our library lease, I believe, or is it expired, correct?
Yes.
So our library lease is expired. I would like to have council authorize our city manager to start negotiations to renew the lease at the library. Personally, what I would like to say is a long-term lease. So the library can plan future activities, so we can plan. My thought process was to give them, offer them a ten-year lease. Year one through five would be a zero increase to the library. And a two percent escalator on year six through ten. So there would be a ten percent increase across the ten-year lifespan of the library lease. Which I think was fair for the city. I think it's fair for the library, it doesn't overburden them financially. And allows both organizations to plan moving forward their finances, fundraising. We can plan, the library can plan, and we can move forward with happily ever after. So I'll open the floor for discussion, that's just my recommendation.
Yes. I'm a firm believer in the local library. I was going to William Penn, going to historical new castle, going to that library from the age of eight to seventeen. I'd like to see the library stay in favor of keeping it forever. So I'd see no problem with a ten-year lease and authorizing town manager, city manager to start negotiating for it.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion?
I totally agree too. It's our library, our people, our kids, and I'm a hundred percent behind having a long-term lease for the library. Notice about operating costs for them as possible. Because they give all their money back to us. You know, they ain't they ain't going to profit from us. So they give it back to our kids, so I'm totally in favor.
They give it back to our kids, so I'm totally in favor. Maybe even, even a little lower if we can.
All right, so I'd like to entertain, somebody could make a motion to allow the city manager to start negotiations with the library for a long-term lease on conditions that are acceptable and favorable to the city and to the library.
I make a motion to the city manager to start negotiations with the library for a long-term lease with conditions that are favorable to both parties.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? None, all those in favor?
Aye.
Toes? All right, motion's carried. All right, before we get into these resolutions, I'm going to ask, is there anybody here under the public hearing that would like to discuss the audio in general? All right, if not, I'm going to, I'm going to adjourn the public hearing. And we're going to a resolution twenty-four zero seven one five dash zero four. Resolution to permit city of Delaware City Police Department to enter into contract with the state board of pension trustees to allow the city to participate in the state of Delaware County municipal police and firefighters pension plan. I would just need a motion to author on exam.
I hereby move to be authorized resolution twenty-four dash zero seven one five dash zero four. Resolution to permit city of Delaware City Police Department to enter into contract with the state board of pension trustees to allow the city to participate in the state of Delaware County municipal police and firefighters pension plan.
I second.
I pause. I'm not opposed to it, but I don't see the resolution in my packet.
She's got, she's got. Which got to get approved before we sign, that's why.
I understand that, yeah. I just, you know, contrary to popular belief, I do like to read everything firsthand.
Any other discussions? All right, none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Toes? All right, motion's carried. Now sign us in case this round. All right. Introduction and first reading of ordinance twenty-four zero seven one five dash zero one related to the private use of city property. This is the one we talked about doing a MOU. If somebody wanted to park their boot or camper or something out on city property. So open the floor for discussion. Just a question I would ask, have we drafted the MOU?
Well, we put this in the form of an ordinance for now, just for discussion points, because there was a parking session in the city because currently we added provisions within the, uh, ordinance. Does not have to be in the form of an ordinance necessarily, it could be limited to MOU, but with provisions and MOU. So the idea basically is to, basically brings forward the concepts that were suggested by several county, uh, several city council members. Just conceptually, this is just the first reading tonight, so the idea is to get issues out of the table, so everyone can look at it. Submit comments back to the city manager. We have a, this will be on the agenda for the public meeting at the next meeting. So that was the public and then aboard and talk about the concepts. And the concepts are having a permanent process where the city manager would review an application for people who want to use city right-of-way as a budding, their property, because the issues that come forward, people parking in that right-of-way. And in another case, building some landscape and structures and putting trees in there. So, and then people are saying, if the state did it, we wouldn't do it too. So that's why we have to formalize the processes, how city property is used by people. Essentially, there's a process we set forth in here that, uh, had the city manager review an application. But it is very clear that you cannot build an infrastructure on the city right-of-way. And if you even put in paving or habers for parking your vehicle, the city at any point will say, we need to remove it because we have a project going on there or any other reason. So people would be doing it at their own risk because it's a city property. But there's a chance that people could use this without issue for many years. But the ideas are regulated to some extent. Does require hard surface, if you're going to park your vehicles on it. And there's also some discussion and limitation on, well, what's going to be parked in city lands? And so the, an issue will be, is it cars? Yes. But then the issue of putting in parking boats and RVs, that is a different issue. And some, and so there's sort of limitations on putting a car, have RV parking in front of someone's house on city property in a residential neighborhood. And so we're trying to make the possibility of people using this, but we're trying to get all the input from members of the public and city council on what that should look like. So you'll see folks on the website for the city tomorrow, this concept. And at the next meeting, there could be discussion of what members of the public and council think about that.
All right, so basically we just have to codify this first, then outline what we can do with the MOU and the space moving.
Well, what we could do is basically, the MOU could actually contain the terms that are in here. We could then take this out of the actual ordinance and just put it in here. That's, um, essentially that there will be MOU that will regulate the use of city property.
Oh, gotcha.
And then these terms here could be pulled out, put into MOU for, uh, implementation and governance by the city manager.
Okay, all right, perfect, all right. All right, I'll open the floor for a motion. First reading of ordinance twenty-four zero seven one five zero one. Um, we need a motion, we need a motion except the first reading, correct?
By co- co- second.
That's the first reading. So the next meeting will be a public hearing and then a final move.
It's a motion except the first reading of ordinance number twenty-four oh seven one five oh one.
I second it.
All right, any further discussion? If not, uh, Madam Secretary, roll the ball, please.
Um, Vice Mayor Jackson.
Aye.
Councilmember Dudley.
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts.
Yes.
Councilmember Turley.
All right, first reading is approved, thank you. All right, resolution twenty-four zero seven one five dash zero one adopting a final operating budget for FY twenty-five. You guys, you guys have questions?
Yeah.
I'll just check before I move forward, so. All right, resolution twenty-four zero seven one five dash zero one adoption of the final operating budget for FY twenty-five, and I'll do it right real quick. The total amount is two million, two hundred forty-one thousand, seven hundred twenty-five dollars. And includes the increase for the police department, includes the, uh, putting the, the officers into the pension plan. And also provides a balanced budget without any tax increases. So I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the operating budget.
Motion to approve resolution twenty-four oh seven one five oh one adopting a final operating budget FY twenty-five.
I second it.
All right, motion is second, any further discussion? Any further discussion? None, all those in favor?
Aye.
Toes? All right, motion's carried. All right, the next resolution twenty-four zero seven one five dash zero three adoption and final, of the final capital budget for FY twenty-five. That number is two million, seven hundred sixty-one thousand, seven hundred ninety-five dollars. And I'll, I'll explain real briefly how we brought up that figure. So this is basically just the cumulative total of the funds that we have available now to spend that were appropriated to us through the state, through the CRF fund, uh, just the community reinvestment fund. That's the things that were used into upgrade the library, camera system, we're going to be doing some paving. And I just learned a few days ago that we were awarded three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in CTF funding, which is Community Transportation Fund. That is maintained through Delta, it has to be used for street repairs, paving, parking lots, those type of things, so. That gives us the, the number two million, seven sixty-one, seven ninety-five. And we'll let council know that there's some projects that we may have a savings on. For instance, there's money in there for the sea wall study. When we had, um, we have eight, they did their presentation. We had, we had the outfit come in and did the, um, presentation on the sea wall study and then sea level rise a few months ago. The one to five plan was, I believe, in a hundred thousand dollar range, I believe there's three hundred and something along that line. So we'll come back to council at some point, ask to reallocate that funding, and then we have to get approval from the state to reallocate that somewhere else. But that's just more for informational purposes. The, um, resolution is to approve the two point seven, so I'll entertain a motion for that also.
I make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-four slash zero seven one five slash oh three, uh, funding capital budget FY two.
Let me twenty-five, FY twenty-five.
It's those eight twenty-five.
Those eight twenty-five, yeah?
No, this is for the, this is for the capital budget, we did the operating.
Yeah, the proof for FY twenty-five, the files listen on the sheet. It's a tight bill on the sheet.
Okay.
All right, sir, a second.
Aye.
All right, any further discussion? None, all those in favor?
Aye.
Toes? All right, motion's carrying. All right, we do have, uh, we do have to go into executive session, I'm going to go to a member of council comments first, so we can get that out of the way. Councilman Doug. Councilman Turley. Councilman Jackson.
Nothing to hurt.
All right, Councilman Roberts.
I just really impressed with the presentation that we had for Dupont today. And really make you see that thing get brought.
Absolutely, yeah. All right, as far as the mayor's report, um, the camera project that we've been working on for literally a year is, is finally taking place. It took us exactly a year to get the attachment agreements, do DPL, that is finally done. They're moving forward. When we're done, we're, we're really going to have a state-of-the-art system that streams back to the police department. We've done a lot of upgrades in the police department, the officers. And myself and the council will have the ability to log in online and look at the cameras. So the officers while they're out on patrol, they can have it on their laptop and look at the cameras throughout the city simultaneously. So if something's going on, it can be even more proactive than they already are. So it's really going to be, like I said, a state-of-the-art system when it's done. Um, talked about councilman Saunders. The other thing I want to put a rest to, a couple of programs just floating around, I did actually put a blurb in Weekly, but for those that don't know, I accepted a job in the city of Clayton three weeks ago for the DeBeter Town Manager. There was some discussion, thought I was going to have to resign, I am not resigning. It's, it's similar to the position that I did at Newcastle County. If anything, there's more separation now because I'm out of Newcastle County and Kent County, but there's no complications with being, being mayor and the city manager. So I have no intentions of resigning or giving up the mayor position, so. If you hear that anywhere, that's not true. Um, a few weeks ago, I met with Chief Henderson, we talked about, um, we get a lot of complaints about speeders and radar. And if you look at the police report this month, it's, it is reflective in the report that it is substantial uptick in traffic enforcement. So I'd like to thank the chief for that and then pass that along to his officers. A lot of my complaints and the phones calming down a lot, so it's definitely made, it made a difference, so thank you for that. Also like to thank everybody that assisted with the Juneteenth celebration. Literally couldn't have pulled this off without the assistance of the police department and the fire department. Brutally hot that day, I don't think people realized how far it was to walk back to the facility, um. And it was just, it was a lifesaver, so I'd like to thank Chief Henderson. President Poppy had to step out and I'll be sure I, I give them a kudos and thank you at their, their next company meeting. And of course, all the work that Mary has put into her committee as well. I think it was really an outstanding first-class event, and I look forward to, uh, what the future brings on the second annual Juneteenth celebrations. Thank you very much. I'll just say here, talked about the CTF funding. I think that's pretty much it for me, I conclude with my report. If anybody has any questions. Outside of that, I will entertain a motion for us to go into executive session.
Motion to enter executive session.
Second. Second, all those in favor? Return to executive session.
Mentioned EMS, I, I regret that I did not mention the comfort that EMS brought that very hot day to have, uh, the letter present there, uh, out with the secretary. That was really excellent. I do have another thing that I want to raise, I raised it, raised it to the mayor privately, and he was very receptive, very responsive. But I want to put it before the entire council. You know, recently we had a tornado, uh, incident. And, um, my weather radio was screaming, if you live in a mobile home, take cover, take permanent shelter. And, um, I wondered where everybody was going to go. Uh, so I, I, I asked the mayor about it, and he mentioned that at one point, the, uh, community center was the appropriate shelter for people needing to take shelter, including all of those people over the Loblone Park. To make that happen, uh, somebody would have to go open it up, because somebody had the key. Uh, it used to be, it was a civil defense, I think it was called civil defense, right? Uh, shelter, uh, but I think, I'm not sure that we have that capacity anymore. So, uh, I want to ask the city council, please, to take into consideration our neighbors, um, at the Loblone Park and others who may be vulnerable. Uh, we will increasingly have these kinds of weather incidents, no doubt.
Thank you for bringing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just got a couple of things. One is, uh, I want to thank our police department. They have done an outstanding job, I think. We've led their short staff, but they're going the best they can. They have increased their presence big time. And I think just about everybody in town's really appreciative of it, so. We really want to thank these guys because they're going to twenty-four seven with short staffs, so we appreciate that. Uh, the other thing I want to mention, since it's almost that time of year again, where the property tax statements are coming in the mail to us. All I'm asking since we have new faces on the town council, just look into property tax procedures about every two or three years. All right, we won't all forget that because I don't get so much in such spirit, right? And speaking of the pension plan, you guys are getting in on that? Well, guess what? I mentioned this to, uh, George over here. I've been a recipient of the Delaware State Fire Service Pension Plan for the last twelve years. It has stuck at a hundred and twenty-five dollars since nineteen eighty-nine. And all, that's all I got until last year, they finally raised it to two fifty, where do I spend it? But I still have to pay taxes on it. That's the only downfall, but it's better than nothing. So I just want you to think about that. And my other question is, you guys talked about this earlier than me, about your dilemmas, uh, dealing with the elections and acquaintance we had here. Is it a possibility, maybe it's built, can the governor override that?
If we have to pass a charter fee.
Okay. I just thought made as an idea. That's all I have, thank you.
All right, any other citizens, yes, Tim?
Uh, I'm building. We have to pick a date for the special election.
Yes, we do, um. What was the criteria usually, it has to be thirty days, or do they let these thirty days be, um, sixty?
They have, uh, thirty days before the election, they have to, like, a lot. So we give them at least thirty days to put in the right decision. So it would be until, we get to September, before they're out of the month, probably, and has to be a month.
So it's like, uh. Said to be a week of it, actually, uh, fifteen, so any, any day, uh, we typically don't want a Tuesday. So if everybody's good with it, said for, uh, Tuesday the seventeenth, September seventeenth.
What's the date of the trial? It's September tenth.
Uh, on the tenth, it's a week before that. And we want to talk about the primary, so is everybody good with the seventeenth? Seventeenth, it is. Any other citizens' comments? Justice.
Yeah, um, I don't know, Jay, if this would be really, uh, true. For the plan that we set, uh, the cutting edge, we're sitting there, like, driving along Washington, there's lots of trees that are hanging, but you can't see the little stop signs. So if we check that out, we have something.
Yeah, some of those trees are actually the ones that were targeted, we're moving a lot of the dead wood. We didn't specifically say, make sure that you can see the stop signs when you get done trimming. Uh, I, you know, hold on and see if they can kind of make the work.
All right, any other citizens' comments? Questions or comments? All right, final call. All right, if not now, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Motion to enter executive session.
Second, all those in favor?